Education Board Meeting, if you could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. McLean, could you please recall the role?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Need?
Here.
Mr. Hire?
Here.
Mrs. Love? Mrs. McGinnis?
Here.
Mrs. Egan?
Here.
Mrs. Crane? Did I say McGinnis? I'm sorry.
Mrs. McGinnis, here.
Mrs. McGinnis, I'm so sorry. Said that twice. I spoke to Mrs. Love earlier. She sends her apology. She got very sick earlier today and is not feeling well and says that she wishes she could be here. Item 1.3 is reading of the public statement. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community hearing. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Items 3 and 9. Item 2 is the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 3 is the first opportunity for citizens to address the board. You are given two opportunities to address the board. Under this item, item 3.1, you can request to address the board about any topic that is on tonight's agenda, which is behind me. When making comments, please state your name and address. Direct your comments here to the board president. Each person may speak for up to two minutes. Per established procedures, the board will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment, although we may refer the matter to appropriate person in the district for further follow-up. Can I have Mrs. Mahoney? Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mahoney. Item 4 is our superintendent update, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Ryan.
Thank you. Good evening, community. Just a couple of quick updates. Number 1 is fizzing and falling up in all of our buildings as we've got into kind of the main part of September, although it feels like second summer out there this week. I'm very happy to report that we're really, really going after it, looking from our young fives in preschool all the way up through our seniors. Everybody's focused and we're seeing a lot of out-of-the-gate, really good relationships built. We're seeing them going already into academics and really exploring into the guts of the school year. So I'm really excited that piece. The second related to our construction, we're very soon at hand and be taking possession of our new gymnasium for the junior high school, and our students are going to be able to have full access as well fall sports. We're excited. It's an amazing facility, and I encourage everybody out there, if you have an opportunity, to be able to do their drive-by or come to one of our events. It's really something to see. And the third part of my update this evening is just to let our community know that we are closely following events in Lansing as we near about two weeks short of a requirement for our government to pass bills to fund schools and roads and everything else that we have going in the state as far as it relates to schools. I'm working closely with our school board to make sure that we have contingencies in place into the majority of fall to be able to continue school regardless of what the state does. So I want to give some assurances, and I want to keep that focus on the books, on the relationships and everything else that we have going on in Clarkston Schools, which is absolutely amazing. So I want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Item 5 is our presentation items, and the first presentation item is item 5.1, which is a presentation about our Clarkston students who visited New Zealand earlier this summer. Ms. Murray? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Laura Murray, and I have with me Alice Andrea Potts, and they both accompanied me on the trip to New Zealand. And thank you for approving trips like this. Just have some pictures to really show you what an amazing opportunity is for our students. Do I click through?
Okay. Our first night, we went to a Maori cultural experience, which was really amazing. They taught us how to carve wood, what else, stick fighting, and all of their different games. And then they prepared a huge feast for us with a lot of food we'd never tried before, but it was really, really wonderful. And they performed, and they were just astonishing. These are them there. There's the chief in the middle.
We came to learn that actually several of them are professional performers, and the music that they played and sang was truly unbelievable experience.
Yeah, they come to the States every two years, and they've performed at the Smithsonian. So it was really great to see.
This is one of my favorites. We went to the Agador Dome, and as you know, New Zealand, or maybe you don't know, but they have more sheep than they have humans in their population. And so we got to see sheep sharing and a show of all of, I think there were 19 different varieties of sheep there. And the students, it was one of, I think, the favorites as well.
During the water adventures, we spotted five different whales. Four were spermback whales, sperm whales. One was a humpback whale. There were a lot of different dolphin families and colonies coming up to the ship, and there was a seal in the middle. Interestingly enough, the animals were fully aware that they were being observed. And when we were going to see that every animal and the boat was being turned around so everybody could see them, they would always turn to the left, probably because they drive on the left side of the road. But it was interesting that they, you know, swim away from this giant boat being turned.
Thank you. I did ask for other students to contribute, and so they sent some pictures. They said some of their favorite things there. We're seeing the mountains. We were in the southern Alps on a train ride, and also you could see them from the boats that we were on.
Oh, the food. New Zealand is very multicultural. There's people from all over the world that live there. So we had lots of Asian food and Italian food, and it was heaven, and it was all family-style. So they would just bring out plates and plates of food. So we got to try tons of new things.
And they actually make their coffee for you to order, which...
And their coffee is wonderful. You want to talk about that?
Kiwis. Kiwis are their national bird, and interestingly enough, the only animals that were on New Zealand, that are native to New Zealand, are all birds. So their main risk for their survival is non-native predators coming in to eat their eggs. And when their eggs hatch, they actually hatch as teenagers. They have incredibly short childhoods. So it's basically being born my age. Incredible nightmare for parents. They're very secluded, introverted animals. They mate for life, and each individual kiwi bird has their own nest. They do not share nests post-hatching.
Yeah. Once the baby's born, the mom is gone. So we went... Go ahead.
We were at the kiwi hatchery, and because of the time of year, there weren't any being hatched. And but we did get to see glimpses. This, the one that you see is in a case. But we did get to see a few, and we got to see kiwis on the tree also. Oh, and we did travel with other group. We traveled with students from Hawaii, which was a really great way to bond. Near the end of the trip, students made friends from there also. And we had our guide, you see in the picture. His name was, oops, that wasn't good. Thought maybe I had a... Sorry. Our guide was Richard. He was a sixth-generation kiwi. He's next to me in the top left, and he was just...
Oh, we still miss him. He was great.
Great.
He was really great.
And then that was just a view of our, one of the hotel rooms, the top accommodations. I think that was... Oh, one more.
Oh. Yeah, we went to the Antarctic Center. So we were five hours away from the Antarctic. It was really cool. We went on this Hogsland trip, which is the vehicle that they use to get through the Antarctic. And then inside, they had a room where you go in so you could experience an Antarctic storm. And so they give you these parkas, and you go in, and I think it went down to like negative 50 in the room, and the wind was blowing, and it was really cool. And then, do you want to tell them about the penguins?
The little blue penguins are, that you can see right here, are in a recreational conservation site. It's a hospital recovery, but most of these penguins do not get to be released back into the wild because they are not healthy enough to be...
They've been injured by dogs or...
The penguin that you see right here lost part of her brain and beak in a skiing accident. She's 15 years old, and she cannot be rehabilitated back into the wild.
So they take care of her.
Thank you for listening, and again, for spreading the word about the fantastic opportunities that we in Clarkston Schools give our students, and thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
How long did you guys stay over there?
It was a 10-day trip.
We were there a solid week, and it was a lot of travel.
Wonderful.
Yeah. It was worth it, though.
How many students went?
So there were seven of us total, so these two and then four others.
Okay, wonderful. Was it worth the plane ride?
Oh, yes.
It sounds like it, but it's always been a little intimidating.
You should all go. You should go.
Yeah, it's always, I think I read Whale Rider when it first came out when I was younger, much younger, and it's, I've been wanting to go ever since, for sure.
It's a great place.
Thank you very much for sharing this with us. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks.
Nicely done.
Okay, our next presentation is an update on the 2025 to 2030 strategic plan. Mrs. Mahoney, Mrs. Puzio, I turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good evening. We're very excited to present the strategic plan for 25 through 2030, and want to really present, I think, the pieces. And I know that we've had a workshop around this, but this does highlight our proposed plan.
Thank you.
So we wanted to just express, you know, the timeline that it took. And so we really engaged over an 18-month process. We actually started in January of '24, which took us right up to June of '25, this past June. And we looked back at all the invites on our calendars and looked at all the meetings that we had. And it looked like over 100 hours of meeting and planning to put this plan in place. So way back in January through March, that block of time of '24, we reviewed our previous process in terms of how did we gather to create the former strategic plan? And that reminded us of good processes in place, and what did we want to keep, and what did we want to tweak? And the first step we really leaned into was develop a survey to reach out to our community. Our community's voice is very important when we put a strategic plan together. So we reviewed our mission, our vision, our pillar and our goals, and leaned into that environmental scan. We partnered with Dr. Wendy Osterman, who partnered also with Dr. John Good from Oakland Schools. Kelly Allen was significant in administering the survey, and we got almost 2,000 responses, which was very important to look at each voice represented there and what their desire was in creating the strategic plan. Dr. John Good did present, not only a workshop, but here at a board meeting in terms of results of that community survey. That led to the beginning of the school year of '24, '25, where we reviewed all that information. We finalized a mission and vision, four pillars and four goals, which was the start, I think, of the development, and a strong start there. And then we took the rest of the time, January through '25, as we wanted to develop strategies to meet those goals within those four pillars and to create a timeline, which we call the Gantt chart. And so we know that we can't do everything at once, and so this is kind of a spread of action steps, strategies to complete. I did want to highlight the 57-member team. All versus were included. And so we met right here in this boardroom. It took a lot of work, not only for these 57 members, but to plan for these meetings, to create meaningful dialogue, look at research, look at the survey in order to move forward. And so that 57-member team was made up of parents in our community. We had board members, community members. We had curriculum leaders. Our building administrators were very important, central office administrators. We had teachers. We had instructional coaches, special education, shared services with our special programs, our counselors. We had social workers, and we had people from operations. So a really solid, I think, very vibrant team to look at what we wanted to put together. So we did lean into our former mission. We did tweak. This was approved by you on December 9th of '24, that Clarkston Community Schools will provide a challenging, healthy, engaging, safe, and supportive educational experience in partnership with families and our community. Our vision is something we continually strive for. This was also presented and approved December 9th of '24, where students of Clarkston Community Schools are well-prepared to lead successful, fulfilling lives and embrace their future with confidence. So this really leads now into the four pillars. You're going to see pillars that we've kept and maybe tweaked a little bit, and then the community was really, had a strong voice with two newer pillars, too. So our first is academic excellence and student success. This is written first purposely because our community had the strongest voice in this arena. So the goal here is to prepare students with the knowledge, skills, and experiences to thrive academically, succeed in future careers, and contribute to their communities. We developed three strategies. Every strategy you'll see in the presentation tonight begins with "we will", and so we will improve student learning outcomes. We will implement effective, research-based, tier-aligned instructional practices. We will research and proactively develop and refine our programs. And so I know you've seen this. I just wanted to highlight those few pieces there. Those strategies, we believe, will lead us towards the accomplishment of our goal. And Stacy's going to go through the next two pillars.
And you'll notice that there's a color coordination with all of our pillars. So academic excellence is that green, and so that flows through in all of the work, and that will continue to flow through for the next five years. Well-being and personal growth, you'll notice, is purple. And the goal there is to nurture the whole person by addressing mental, emotional, and physical well-being to ensure lifelong success for students and staff. And so we have three strategies with this one as well. We will promote mental health and emotional intelligence initiatives. We will offer a wide range of opportunities for involvement, and we will position students with the knowledge and skills to engage in informed and responsible citizenship. Now, we had a well-being component in our last one, and this is tweaked a little bit. This next one is new for us as a pillar, and this is the District Family and Community Engagement. And the goal for this one is to foster meaningful relationships with students, staff, families, and community partners to promote trust and active involvement. And so for this one, there's actually four different strategies. And the first one is to say we will create school and district environments where all students, family, staff, and community members feel valued, seen, and supported. We will empower families to actively participate in their child's education. We will strengthen and expand reciprocal partnerships with community organizations, and that will help us to grow that. And we will ensure consistent, transparent, and accessible communication.
Our fourth was also a voice from the community, and this is somewhat newer, but it does wrap around operational and staff excellence. This is our gold standard. And so we want to provide high-quality staff, operations, and infrastructure to cultivate an environment of safety and success. And so we have five strategies here. We will ensure high levels of satisfaction and retention, I think, for teaching and non-teaching staff. We will invest in continuous growth constantly for Clarkston Community Schools. We will ensure a safe and secure, welcoming environment for all. That includes students, staff, and visitors. We will maintain and upgrade our buildings, all sites, all infrastructure, and we will ensure fiscal responsibility over these five years. So those are our four pillars. Each pillar has a goal, and again, the strategies are outlined. So this is a rough draft. Upon approval, I think we're going to dive in and make sure that this is exactly how we want to lean into, but I did want to highlight indicators and measurables. I think it's important how we know that we have success within the four pillars. And so, again, I know that you've had this. So in our first, academic excellence and student success, I'll just highlight the third one there. We're so excited about MTSS and all the work that's done, been done at elementary. On October 10th, which is a professional learning day in our district, we are launching the Secondary Handbook to guide, again, MTSS, which is Tier 1 Instruction. That is the instruction that all students receive. It highlights Tier 2 Instruction, which is kind of an intervention. What do we do when our students are not successful? And then even Tier 3 is how do we even reach one-on-one opportunities to really ensure that our students are succeeding?
And so well-being and personal growth, I'll highlight then. I'll continue that MTSS because there's also an MTSS component for mental health and behavioral needs. And so how can we improve the intervention process? How can we progress monitor and examine the needs of our students and help to respond to those needs? And collaborate sometimes outside of Clarkston for, with those organizations who might be able to better support our students. Under District Family and Community Engagement, one of those is to provide some professional learning to our staff that focuses in on the empathy and welcoming environment. What does that look like? What does it feel like to be a student, a staff member, a family member in our schools?
And then operational and staff excellence, just, you know, zooming in on this bottom piece. Implement effective budgeting and transparent reporting aligned with our district goals. We're excited, I think, to partner with Mary Beth Rogers, but to bring in a new hire soon just to look at fiscal over the next five years. This bottom little color grid is the entire Gantt chart. It is a link to see the five-year plan for both elementary and secondary. And I just want to thank, I thank every member on our 57-team. I want to thank our board to continually guide and offer insight and feedback. And then I want to thank Heidi, Stacy here, Dr. Osterman, Kelly Allen, you know, Jessica Kimmel, yes, from Operations. And that was the small group that kind of guided the big group. So a lot of work, a lot of pride here, and just want to say thank you. And I'm super excited to lean into this, so. Any questions that you might have?
Any questions from the board? No. So I just wanted to say thank you again. I know at the board, we had a lengthy workshop just a couple of weeks ago on it, and I asked you to present for the greater community, and so I thank you very much. Mrs. Egan and I were the board members on the committee. And I know I said it two weeks ago, but it bears repeating, that it was amazing how you took 57 different opinions and different thoughts and different people and voices, and much like herding cats, but successfully, were able to really do this and do it so well. I'm also very excited to lean into it. I love the new pillars. I think Mr. Hire and I were recently talking about community engagement, and I think that's going to be a huge part of it, so thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item 6, action items. Item 6.1 is approval of personnel changes. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve personnel changes as listed on the attachments as presented.
Support. Okay. Motion is made and supported. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Motion carries. Item 6.2 is approval of the 2025-2030 strategic plan. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the Clarkston Community Schools 2025 through 2030 strategic plan as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Are there any questions or discussions?
You said one comment. I made for this in the workshop, personnel crane, but I do want to clarify that this plan is easy to understand. Prior plans of the district, I don't think members of the public can really grasp. This is well-written. It's written in concise and direct language, and I applaud the 57-person committee for coming up with this. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion, questions? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.3 is approval of a change order request by Johnson &amp; Sons.
I move the Board of Education approve the construction change orders for Johnson &amp; Sons excavating in the amount of $194,285 as presented.
Support. Motion made and supported. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.4 is approval of the contract for Clarkston High School, bid package 1. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the contract for Burning Air Mechanical Incorporated with the amount of $7,375,000, an additional 10% construction contingency in the amount of $737,500, for a total of $8,112,500 as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any, are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.5 is approval of a purchase of cafeteria tables for Sashabon Middle School. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the bid from Stafford Smith for 44 cafeteria tables at Sashabon Middle School in the amount of $129,952, and a contingency allowance of $15,000 to cover any unforeseen costs during delivery and removal, for a total recommendation of $144,952 as presented.
Support.
All right. Motion made and supported. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.6 is approval of the delegate certification for the MASV Delegate Assembly. The annual leadership conference is in October in Traverse City. I would like to suggest that we put forth Amanda Love, Greg Need, Steve Hire, and myself as delegates, with Mike Clark as an alternate. Can I get a motion approving that recommendation, please?
I move that the Board of Education decide if they wish to designate delegates and alternates to the 2025 MASV Delegate Assembly and submit those names electronically.
Support. Can I, how do we do this? Can I get it so that you make the motion as I suggested?
As stated.
As stated? Just add "as stated"?
As stated.
It was Amanda, Greg, Steve, and me. And then Mike Clark as an alternate. Is that support okay, Mrs. Egan? Okay.
I mean, we might as well have the other three board members as...
Alternates, okay. Then I can add, well, they're not going to be there. Is it okay?
We have four alternates.
Okay.
And four delegates, so.
Then can we amend to add Mrs. Egan and Mrs. McGinnis as alternates? Yes?
Sure.
Yes, okay. Are there any further discussion or comments about that? No? Okay, motion made and supported. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6.7 is approval of the 2025 to '26 board goal. Item 6.7 is approval of the 2025 to '26 board goals. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the 2025-26 board goals as presented.
Support. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or discussions about the approval of the board goals, keeping in mind that we will be discussing this during discussion items? No? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, item seven is report items. Item 7.1 is our monthly finance report, Mrs. Rogers.
Okay, you've received the materials for June, July, and August. Oops, sorry about that. Okay, so the current monthly financial update as of August 31. This would just be starting July 1st. You were just given the June data because I wasn't able to give it to you over the summer. The budget to actual right now is 3.41%. Really, the only thing you've received at this point is about 25% of local revenue, which is your tax, summer tax collection is the majority of that. Your budget to actual expenditures right now are at 7%, and your highest would be your operations since you start, we start paying our operational staff July 1st. And your August 31st fund equity is right now at $25.7 million, and we're expecting the unadded fund equity to end at about 28.9%. 28.9 million. Do you have any questions on any of the materials of the three months of data that you received?
President Crane?
Yes.
I have a question. I'm curious, how much are we dipping into our fund equity for every payroll that we have to pay out without any budget from the state of Michigan to pay our teachers?
Have not figured that out yet. It wouldn't be dipping into fund balance. It would just be cash flow would become an issue for Clarkston.
And the point I'm just making is that luckily, we have a fund equity.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that fund equity, equity will keep us afloat while the legislature determines what our budget's going to be. So it's, it's like living out of our savings account right now.
Yeah, you'll be, we normally would receive our first one October 20th, and if the state doesn't get the state budget passed in time, then yeah, October 20th, and we get about $10 million a month from the state. So if we didn't get that October 20th, then that would dip right into that. We're at $25 million right now, so then you're, you have about that cash in your bank right now, so then you would have 15 million. But you're also trying to make payrolls every bimonthly, so it would be really rough, yes. You'd have to start looking at maybe borrowing or something if they went much past, I would assume, October 20th.
And Ms. McGinnis, just to kind of reiterate, that date's very important for our community to recognize. So as I said, we don't expect our first payment in any given year till October 20th. So if the state shuts down on October 1st, we're almost three weeks, 20 days into it before we would be missing a payment, and I would be hard-pressed after all the state services shut down for even a matter of days, how catastrophic and chaotic that would be. As you said, additionally, our rough figuring, and again, not holding Ms. Rogers to this, but when we sat down to look at it, is about 10 million a month, which is just simple math, seeing we have close to 30 million in the bank. We are spending into that right now.
Yes, as you can see.
So we're going to burn into it, but easily through Thanksgiving, and at least right now, I'd look at our community. I have no intention to recommend to the board that we go out and borrow money to continue operations. We're going to spend every dollar while we can. Will last several months, and then I feel like that we should lean on our legislators to hopefully have everything moving forward by that point.
Yeah, and I would just like to say, my point isn't that I want to create any hysteria of any kind. I just want to point out that luckily, we have, in the 18 years that I've been on this board, really focusing on establishing a fund equity. And many years ago, that fund equity didn't exist like that. We were lucky to have 10, 10 million and then borrowing to process payroll. So it was a goal of the board to make sure we had a fund equity, that we had a healthy balance to maintain the district, and, and obviously, we do.
Well said.
Thank you, Mrs. McGinnis. Is there any further questions or comments about this? Thank you very much, Mrs. Rogers. I know, I think we were saying leaning on legislators. I don't think we should wait. I think we should do it now.
Yep.
But, for sure. Which leads us actually into item 7.2, which is the COSBA Advocacy Conference update. Mrs. Love was set to give it, but as she is absent, I will. Mrs. Love and I attended a COSBA advocacy on behalf of Clarkston Schools. Mr. Hire was there as a COSBA board member for MASB. I know everyone on this board, I think, except for Mr. Clark, has been to the advocacy conference that we go to for NSBA every January, and if you're not aware, there are now two national school board associations. One is the NSBA and one is COSBA, which is consortium of State School Board Association. And so as Mr. Hire is now a board member sitting for COSBA, we thought it would be good to attend to that. We did in, we've done a couple COSBA things. We've done a couple NSBA things. We're trying to figure out which is the best. Unfortunately, I felt like both have value. Unfortunately, it's, it's, it was, I got a lot of value out of this. I think it would be good for the members who've been to NSBA to maybe go to this one because it was different. It was very interesting. They had panels in which they had congresspeople from both sides of the aisle, basically sitting in front of us and talking about issues, which was really interesting. We, so the conference itself was one day, which I really liked, which gave us more time to set up meetings and meet with legislators, which we did on Tuesday. And we talked a lot about our new strategic plan. We pitched Clarkston and explained how when the state of Michigan in general tends to be going down in test scores, Clarkston is going up. We talked to Lisa McLean's office and asked that they use us as an exemplary model, which I feel like, you know, the aide that we talked to was very receptive to that. We had some very good conversations in a time when I feel like it's a little harsh, a little dark. So, all in all, I would say it was a very successful advocacy trip, so. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hire or myself? No? Okay. Thank you. Item nine is the second opportunity for citizens to address the board. Okay. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Item eight is the, I tried to skip it, but I won't, discussion item on board goals, especially since I'm the one who put it up. Thank you, everybody. Our retreat was last month, and we spent, what, four or five hours really kind of hammering out some goals for the year, and I sent those out in draft, and I did get some feedback, which I appreciate very much. So we approved those board goals today, and then I would like to, I sent this out to the board as a draft, I'd like to talk about assigning each of the eight, or seven goals to at least two board members per, and I would like those board members to take ownership of those goals and report out on them periodically and check in on them and, you know, kind of make sure, hold us accountable as a whole board for making sure that they get done this year. Does anybody have any further thoughts or questions on what I sent out? Mr. Need?
I thought the workshop that we had to develop the goals was excellent. I thought you did a great job in putting that together. I fully support the board goals as presented. I am fine with at least my assignments that you gave me.
You don't want more?
I do not want more, no, but I will take what I've been given.
Okay.
And I'm perfectly fine with those. Thank you.
Thank you. So just quickly, then, Mrs. McGinnis and Mrs. Egan will seek to explore and understand our system, current, current systems of support and how we can grow into the secondary level. Mrs. Love and Mrs. Egan will work with the administration on developing an elevator pitch for Clarkston. Mr. Hire and myself will work with the administration to define our culture by outlining our core values. Mrs. Love and Mr. Need will develop a plan and a timeline for the annual superintendent evaluation. Mr. Hire and myself will develop a plan, schedule, and agenda to conduct board study sessions at individual schools in order to engage with more staff, parents, and students, which I think goes into our strategic plan and the community involvement. Mr. Hire and Mr. Clark will provide oversight of ongoing bond construction projects and report out periodically. And then our policy committee of Mr. Need, Mrs. McGinnis, and Mr. Clark will evaluate and select a board policy provider for the district and then transition our policies to this provider. So that was kind of the overview. Does anyone else have any further questions or comments on this? Okay, thank you. Now, item nine is the second opportunity for citizens to address the board. I did not see anybody go up there. Please check. Is there anybody in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak? Okay. Item 10 is information items. Our next Board of Education meeting is on Monday, September 22nd, with 6 o'clock board workshop, and Monday, October 13th, at 7 o'clock is our next regular meeting. Item 11 is adjournment. May I have a motion, please?
I move we adjourn.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.